Okay, Mary Robert.
You're back. Okay, we're all back. Well, next on the agenda is Resolution 18-072. It says 7/3 on the agenda, but it's actually 7/2. And that's the council meeting schedule. During the break, I asked if you wanted to, you could take a look at the schedule. And we'll open it up for discussion.
Why is there no time for October 22?
That would be a question for the clerk, who is not here. I don't know why that's blank.
I'm just assuming it should probably be 7:00.
Yeah, I think it's a tight.
I believe it was just a minute.
Okay, as you can see, working from the bottom up, there's a single December and a single November meeting because of holiday scheduling. And likewise, in the summer, historically, we've had one meeting in June.
July and August.
July and August.
That's correct.
And that's what she has.
Correct.
So you've got five out of 12 months where we're already agreeing that one meeting a month is sufficient. With, if something comes up, we can always schedule another one. I can tell you right off the bat, looking at this now, there are two of these additional meetings that I will be unable to attend. And I'm not asking everyone to bow down to my schedule by any means, I'm just saying, you know, we're looking at some additional meetings here. There's two off the bat that I can't make, so that means seven out of 12 months.
Well, I can make them all, and I think it's easier for us to conduct business with extra meetings.
The, my only comment would be that the way this is written, there would be an agenda meeting and a public business meeting twice a month. And I don't see the need for a public business meeting twice a month. I would, I would have no problem if this was redone, resubmitted with an agenda meeting, whatever, first Monday, second Monday of the month, and a regular business meeting scheduled later that month. I would have no problem with that. But the way this is written, and the way that the resolution is written, I could not vote for this.
I think this is put back to the way it was before it was changed to one meeting a month, where there's an agenda meeting and an open public meeting after it, like we're having tonight. And then there's an open public meeting on the fourth Monday of each month, which is exactly the way it was before it was changed to one meeting a month. I see absolutely nothing wrong with that.
I just think it'd be a lot better if we just had just an agenda meeting, and got together and talked about stuff, as Councilman Muir said at our, at our last council meeting, that we should have a meeting and we can kick it around, open to the public, kick it around, and then bring back the next meeting to vote on. I think that's a great idea, but not the way this is written, and the way that the resolution is put together, so, that's just my opinion.
Denise, does it make it easier for you to conduct business if there's two public meetings a month?
Not really, to be honest with you, because right now, we're, I'm conducting business once a month, and I'm okay with paying bills and things of that nature, so...
I agree with Council President Dixon, having an agenda meeting. It's a public meeting, anyway. And then having a public business meeting at second date.
Agenda meeting, you can't...
Many towns have that.
I would say that the way it's written here is just, she has it just to advertise. So in other words, it, we can vote on it, it doesn't really matter, let's just vote on the schedule, and when she advertises, it will be the agenda meeting and the public business meeting. We can, I mean, I would prefer, and I'm sure the public would, if we're taking care of public business.
Twice a month.
And having one agenda meeting. That was the purpose of changing the motion, to open it up more, to have more public input, and to be more open to the public. So, I mean, we can get, I'm sure when she advertises it, you know, are you all here because it's a public business meeting, or because then it's an agenda meeting, or are you just here because it's a council meeting? Right. So I don't think the public cares what we call it, as long as we're here twice a month to answer to them.
Well, one implies that we would be having regular votes.
That's right.
At vote meetings.
There is a difference.
If you have the public business meeting, you'd be passing resolutions, as opposed to just having an open forum for discussion of any new ideas, past ideas, and what you'd be proposing an ordinance for.
Public business, no, that would be for the agenda, the agenda meeting would set that, and then we could do business at either one.
I think Gabriella was, put this together based on the response she got from what she sent out to us. Now, I know I responded to her, and it's pretty much, she, she did exactly almost what I wanted, with the exception of some other stuff, which she might have gotten input from some other council people, but if council people had objections to certain things, you know, I, I think that instead of Gabriella going crazy, you know, maybe if we respond to her email, she'll be able to get us a better list going forward. But if you just ignore it, you know, what's she gonna put together, we're just gonna delay and delay and delay.
Well, actually, the last time we tabled it, in order to get the dates. So now we have the dates, so I would advocate that we vote on it, we have the dates, and then we can decide whether it's called a, a public business meeting, a tea party, whatever we want to call it after that, but let's just vote on the fact that we want to have two meetings a month, regardless of what she has.
Whatever we vote on has to have the appropriate word.
And I would, I would go to our legal counsel, the resolution says, before every public business meeting will be an agenda meeting. That has to be rewritten.
You do have to specify in your resolution what type of meetings.
Thank you. We can't just blindly vote on something and then fix it later.
Right.
Okay, then I vote, I, I say that we vote on what's here right now.
Okay. Fine.
Okay, I just, I would like to put in my two cents. I like the idea of two meetings. I like the idea of two meetings. I like an agenda meeting that stands alone. The reason I like an agenda meeting that stands alone is, this is the opportunity to have six council people in the room at the same time discussing items. It's the only way we can have six people in the room at one time to discuss things. Otherwise, you, you can't do it, because it's, it's against the law to have more than three public officials discussing something at the same time, without having a called public meeting. Okay? That's why I like agenda meetings. And don't forget, too, as I'm saying this to the council, you folks don't like to call each other so much. You don't like to send emails to each other so much. So the idea of having an agenda meeting where people actually speak, exchange ideas, point, counterpoint, is great for not only the council to work together, but also the people in Milltown see that it's fair and open government, and that's important. My problem with the agenda meeting and the business meeting in one, is that oftentimes, what's discussed at the agenda becomes the vote at the business meeting. Now, if you're in the agenda and you're open-minded, and you can, someone can sway your vote or make you see another point of view, that's great. But it's nice to have a little block of time where if someone gave you some information you didn't have, or gave you a point of view, that isn't necessarily your own, but you think it warrants a little, you know, detective work, that gives you a week or two to call the business administrator, talk to the borough attorney, call the clerk, call your senator, call whoever, get some information off the internet, talk to other council people, and then formulate your vote for the next meeting. So maybe if you want to have a business meeting, let's not vote on things that were discussed at the agenda. Because we want to have the agendas to be able to speak to each other and exchange ideas. I mean, ask yourselves, can somebody change your vote, your, your mind in a matter of three minutes in an agenda meeting, and then it's, it's gonna change the way you, you perceive something? I don't think so. I, I know myself, I, I would like to have more time. So that's a little food for thought for you.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Or, if I may finish, if you do the two meetings and you want to have a, maybe this is a question for the attorney, could we have an agenda meeting and a public business meeting, but the public business meeting would only be for items that have been scheduled? Because presently, what we do is, we have an agenda and a public business meeting, and if something comes up that's of importance, and we need to have, we need to convene, we just call a meeting. And we deal with that situation, and that's pretty much, you know, special council meeting, and then we, we go away. Would it be possible to schedule an agenda and a public, public business meeting, and have a full agenda meeting, and then say, well, we don't really have anything for the public business meeting, so there's nothing on that agenda to be discussed? And then pick it up at the next meeting?
Is nothing that precludes you from doing that?
So basically, what it would do, it would, it would build in that second business meeting without the necessity of actually having it. Because if we're, if we're doing all of our business at the second meeting, then we really don't need it at the first.
That's right.
Well, I think, I think the question is, you should ask the vendors how they feel about that. Because vendors that get paid once a month, and then if you miss the day, deadline, then you get, you go two months without getting paid, that could be a problem. Also, ask the, the residents of the town, who we are here representing, if they miss a deadline, they don't get their, what they want to talk about on the agenda for another month. So, so you have to kind of look at this whole, this whole thing as, what are we doing here? We're here representing the public, I think you should give the public as many opportunities to, to speak and get on the agenda, and, and get decisions made. You know, and, and lastly, you know, there's always the issue of, you can advertise it as a discussion-only meeting, which we know happened at the last meeting, so there's always that, too.
Well, the agenda meetings pretty much are a discussion meeting, and then you could always have, when you have the resolutions, you could poll, there's always the period for public comment prior to voting on any resolution, so, and it's only limited to what's being proposed that night, so the audience does, and the residents have two opportunities to comment on something. And as, I think, though, it's important to have the business meeting still, where it stands is the second Monday, because of payments of bills and, and claims. In order to keep regular business moving forward, it's just, any other items that are left over from the agenda meeting would then be added on to the following month's regular business meeting. So agenda be the latter part of the month, regular business the first part of the month.
Denise, what is, what is it more advantageous for you to have the business meeting? The regular council meeting? Second or fourth Monday?
I would say the second, because I'm thinking of lease payments and due dates of those things, those items. So the second meeting would be, would be better, I mean, the second Monday would be better for me. But, where our attorney and I were just...
Wouldn't it be helpful to have it both times? I, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just watched the last month's council meeting, and your statement was that it would be helpful to you to have it twice.
I guess it really, to me, I mean, I can pay some bills at one meeting, pay bills at, you know, at the fourth Monday, doesn't really matter.
However you list it on the resolution, is how you have to do it going forward. So if you list a business meeting, you still have to have a business meeting? I don't know if that answers your question, but I think that's...
I'd say we just leave it like that.
Well, so we could still have a business meeting, but it might be, okay, is there any old business? Is there any new business? Here's your report, you know, I mean, it, it could be that, if we, if we conduct, if we've been conducting the bill-paying, et cetera, at one meeting, okay? If we do that all, say we do that all at the first meeting of the month, second meeting of the month, there isn't going to be really, probably any bill-paying, because you'll have taken care of it. There might be one or two things that might come up, so we might have a...
Strugglers might come through.
We might have a bills and claims of, you know, a few items.
Right. I think that would be helpful.
But it would certainly be an abbreviated meeting, I would think.
Yeah. Which is, instead of one really long meeting, have...
Well, you'd still have resos, though. You may still have, you may still have personnel hires, or things of that nature at both meetings, you don't know, you know, if things happen that way, also.
You still do have to open it up to the public.
Correct.
Correct.
Whichever meeting, you're still opening to the public.
Okay, but that, that still doesn't leave an open-ended agenda meeting.
Yes.
Which is what I was hoping for. I was hoping for an agenda meeting that is an agenda meeting. That, that the council has a couple hours to sit and talk about things, and try to deal with each other, and, and work with each other to get things done.
Plus, when we're on the committees, it does include our borough staff. Now we have to, you know, in two weeks, you gotta rush everything, get everything put together, if there is an, a, a, issue that comes up, we need to discuss it. Now we have a two-week timeframe sometimes, as opposed to having that four weeks that, you know, if they're out, they have vacation time, whatever it may be, maybe you get busy too, you have time off, they might not be able to meet at certain times, our professionals, as well as their staff. So that would be better, to have the agenda meeting, and then have the regular council meeting separately.
Mr. Bruder, do we have to act on this? It's on the agenda, it's on the agenda, it's a resolution, do we have to vote on this as-is? We can't make changes to it, I'm assuming, that we have to vote on what's here in front of us, correct?
Yeah. During, during this meeting, you would vote on it as-is? You, you could, could vote, you can either vote to table, and then adjust later on, you can vote on it as-is, vote up or down, that's council preference.
I'd like to point out that the clerk sent this out a week and a half, or two weeks ago, for all of us to review. And I made the motion at the January 16 meeting, and we talked, I know Councilman Revolinski had commented that we could speak together and see what's good for all of us. And I have received zero response from anyone. I actually saw the mayor and Mr. Dixon the other night, and we talked about it a little, but otherwise, I, we, nobody's reached out to say what would work for all of us. So the clerk put it together, at our request, after the January 16 meeting, and now here we are, a month later, when nobody commented. If they did, she would have changed it. So I say, we vote on it as-is.
Mr. Bruder, we can make an amendment, though, to the resolution, say I amend to propose changes, and then vote on those changes first, right?
Yeah.
For the resolution, so, so instead of...
And then we're right back where we were last month.
See, this is the idea behind the agenda, is for you folks to discuss things, and try to come to, wait, wait for it, compromise.
What I was gonna say...
No, this is the compromise, Mr. Mayor.
Alls I want is one agenda meeting where that's all we do is the agenda.
That's right.
That's my vote.
We should have the clerk back.
This is, this was the compromise. And now, if we're gonna get into the, whether it's, you know, she hasn't worded the way we wanted, you know, she, she has her reasons for that, I'm sorry she's sick, or she could have answered it here tonight. If you, if we vote on it, and it, just vote yea or nay, and then if we need to change it for some reason, to accommodate her language, then put a motion on it the next meeting to change it.
I was gonna say, instead of splitting hairs, why don't we just add the word "agenda" to every meeting? And if we have something to discuss at the agenda meeting, fantastic. If not, we move right on to the public.
Is that doable?
You know, at least this way, our ordinance abides by anything we wind up doing for either meeting.
That's a good compromise. That's fine with me.
Any other discussion? So I guess there was a, a request to put the word "agenda" and "public business meeting" for every meeting.
No, that's what it is, ma'am.
No, it's not. Agenda's not on everyone. So this way, we can discuss if one becomes the agenda, fantastic. If one becomes the regular public business meeting, great. It gives us the liberty to perform both.
I think Gabriella's dead, I was looking for it. Like, what in the world did you people do? Is that all right with you, Mr. Bruder?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to question.
Was it, is Mr. Revolinski's suggestion acceptable?
Mr. Revolinski's, Revolinski's suggestion is consistent with the language of the proposed resolution, just not the chart that accompanies it.
That's fine.
So does he have to make a motion?
Not yet. We're not, we're not in the business meeting yet.
So is it just for a discussion?
We're still on agenda.
We get to have more of those coming up.
So as a practical matter, really, what you would do, you could vote on the resolution as it's presently worded, with a notation that the attachment, the schedule would have to be worded to reflect the language that's within the resolution, if that's, if that is the suggestion.
Fine, let's do that.
Any other considerations? Okay, being none, we shall move on. Dissonious engineering items. Mr., welcome, Mr. McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of your heavy agenda tonight, I'll make this as quick as I can. We have three items tonight. The first item is Wilson Avenue. You may remember, it's a three-phase road improvement project. The first phase has been completed, with the exception of some minor punchless. Remaining two phases have been done, you adopted the ordinance, and tonight on your agenda is an authorization for us to proceed with the design. As you may remember, there's a large drainage component to this project, which is contemplated to correct the drainage problem down at the Janet Court. Part of the project includes improvements on Janet Court, milling and paving to Wilson Avenue, insulation of storm sewer system to serve Wilson Avenue from the terminus of Wilson, through an existing easement to Janet Court, and easterly along Janet Court to the intersection of Center Street, milling and paving at Janet Court from the easement connecting to Wilson Avenue to the storm sewer connection to Center is quite a distance, and removal replacement sidewalk and curves to improve ADA access. Because of the, the cost of this, the borough has authorized us to submit this project to DOT for funding. I'm pleased to report that we should hear something in May of this year. Hopefully, it's positive news. We've heard that DOT has additional funding, funding this year because of the adoption of the Transportation Trust Fund Act extension. And we're happy to report that not only will you hear in May, then in June, they're gonna ask for additional applications for grant funds. So it looks like the, the money from the state is starting to move to the town trips and to the boroughs, albeit slow, but it is coming. So that's where we are. So basically, this is a authorization for us tonight to begin on that design. We understand there's limited funds in the borough, and it may be a need to phase it. If we did phase it, we would start the storm sewer from the Janet Court end, and, because obviously, we have to find an outlet for it, and then come up through the easement. So we're happy to, obviously, get that project going. You do have some grant conditions and timing, so we need to move this as fast as we can, because of the fact that if you don't get it done and advertised for bids, you could lose the grant. We've also added, asked that the ordinance, and I believe it does include time in there for acquisitions of property. There is an easement, we believe, that is at the end of Wilson, which is a, a public right-of-way paper street that existed at one time, has been vacated. But I believe there's an easement that's been maintained through there, we might need an easement for grading and restoration. So I just wanted to let you know what that project's about, if there's any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What portion of the engineering, I, I see the amount in here for design services, but it's my understanding that the majority of the design services, maybe perhaps not all the details are going out to bid, are, have already been performed?
Phase one is done, out for bid, awarded, and constructed. This is for phase two and three. So the idea is to do the whole two and three now, and if it turns out you can't do it, we'll do what we can, and then phase three will be done later on.
Right, but wasn't all of that considered when phase one was designed?
No. At the time, phase one was designed, there was no commitment of dollars. The other two phases are...
Yeah, this all took place during the state shutdown of municipal projects, DOT projects, correct?
That's right.
And that's why it was phased.
But the, the project includes a large off-site drainage component, because what happens now is, the water runs down over that slope, and creates an ice dam in Janet Court. It's been there for many, many years, and the intent now is to go through and correct that with this project, so...
No, I understand the scope of it, I just was under the impression that, having moved forward with the construction aspect of phase one, that the other parts were already designed to incorporate the impact from phase one into phases two and three.
No.
So, okay.
I tried to tell you that at a meeting last year, and nobody was listening.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Second on the list is, just to update you on the tax maps, again, pleased to report that the tax assessor was sent a draft copy of the map with a list of what's called MOD 4 comparisons. MOD 4 is a database, which is maintained by the county, and what we've done is to take that database, compare it to your tax map, and list where there's deviations. There's somewhere around 200 to 300 deviations, which, considering the age of your tax map, is nothing to get major concern about. I have looked at it during our meeting tonight, many of them are alphanumeric changes, and what that means is, that is, there was a subdivision years ago, if it was, say, Lot 4 in Block 2, it would have been called Lot 4. A and Lot 4. B. The new state regulations now make that Lot 4.01 and 4.02, so that's called an alphanumeric change. There's many of those changes. In addition, where there were major subdivisions, block numbers were changed, and they are also some of the differences on the map. So the idea is to get our map to either comply with MOD 4, or MOD 4 to comply with the map, and that's basically, it's a back and forth between us and your assessor, and we're pleased to report that it's going very well, and we'll keep you posted.
Excellent.
Mike, just a quick question on that.
Yeah, sure.
Isn't the county going through an updating tax map for all the rest of the towns in Milltown County?
There's talk about it, I'm not sure they're doing it, but there's talk about it.
So, so, we're doing this, we're paying for this. We're actually, they're paying, the taxpayers are paying for it.
That's correct.
Okay, and what's the cost on that?
For our property fund?
Yeah.
Somewhere around, I think, $70,000, I think it was.
Okay. I think I heard from the county that they're in the process, they're, they're starting to do it now for all the rest of the town.
There's a discussion of it, that's correct.
We'll be looking forward to their check for $70,000.
Good luck with that.
Last item I had was, again, to talk about the grants, as I said, we should be hearing in May, and hopefully in June of this year, we'll get another grant opportunity to submit for, for the face of improvement.
Excellent.
That's all we have to...
Beautiful. Any questions for the engineer? Seeing none, audience comments, please state your name and address for the record. And the microphone in the center of the room, please be reminded that questions are limited to things discussed at this evening's agenda meeting.
Steve Gregg, this is 25 Lincoln Avenue. Just a couple of comments regarding the tree maintenance in town. Number one, the town absolutely has to allocate monies in the budget for tree maintenance. It's a necessary service, it's not gonna go away. It's like garbage removal, it's always there, you gotta do it. I think next time the Finance Committee meets, you're gonna have to come up with a comfortable number, to just put in the budget, and you're just gonna have to live with it. I mean, nobody likes to see their taxes go up, but this is just one service that you can't ignore. You just gotta do it. One other comment, too. Many years ago, at an early shade tree commission meeting, the idea was brought up about the feasibility, about the town hiring a tree crew. Basically, their job would be maybe three guys or so, their job would strictly be tree removal, tree pruning, and planting. Now granted, you might say, oh, that's gonna be expensive, this and that, but I think in the long run, it would be a worthwhile investment, only because they would never be out of work. It's like saying, you know, hire extra garbage men. Garbage men always pick up garbage, these guys would always be doing tree maintenance. Tree maintenance is not something that you could say, oh, let's spend $300,000 this year, and it'll all be done, and then we're done. It's an ongoing issue. It's something that has to be done all the time, and, I don't know, maybe in the long run, I think it would actually pay off. Because, you know, in the past, when, you know, budgets were being trimmed, that was one area that the, was always getting cut back, was tree maintenance in town. And now it's coming back to bite us in the butt. That's something that you're gonna have to come up with a comfortable number, and just put it in the budget, and just do it. You know, can't, you can't, there's no way of getting around it. One other comment while I'm up here, just regarding the meetings, the council meetings, I kinda liked the way it was, the old schedule. You met twice a month, eight months out of the year, and then you met once a month, June, July, August, and I think once in December. I just think that there's too much going on in town that you can't accomplish just once a month. I kinda like the old schedule, the way it was. Maybe even if you just did it, say, if you broke it up, maybe six months out of the year, you met twice a year. There's just too much going on in town, where I just don't think you can cover everything once a month. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, yes. This does have to do with something discussed at the agenda meeting. Yep. All right.
Eric Lexi, 31 Bruce Court, and also president for Milltown Little League. Like you and I, my fellow members of Milltown Little League Board of Directors share many common similarities, we're all elected officials, and we've all agreed to do our roles to support our community. We're all volunteers, and we largely dedicate more time to our volunteer roles than we do the jobs that actually put food on our table. We make sacrifices to ourselves and our own families, and dedicate time for what we believe in and the cause that we serve, and we all strive to make our community better. We're all passionate and committed to what we do, and for that, I thank you and the many volunteers of Milltown Little League. Where we do vary, however, is our Milltown Little League Board of Directors is not defined by an additional letter at the end of our names and titles. We're a group of individuals who collectively strive to do what is best for our children, the league, and our community, and we do not allow political affiliations or distaste for somebody to influence our decisions. Our positions on the board are subject to reelection annually, and for those that wish to carry out this prestigious privilege, they must fight for what they believe is best for the children of our community. Mr. Mayor, on January 12th, 2018, I sent a proposal on behalf of Milltown Little League to the Borough of Milltown Clerk, with a request for consideration for lighting on Field 2 at Gloria Bradford Borough Park. We were advised that our matter would not be placed on the official agenda at the January meeting. In response, I requested that the Borough Clerk vote our proposal to members of council and mayor following this, and on January 16th, I stood before all of you at that meeting in regard to this proposal. At that time, council and mayor all received the proposal in good favor, which all parties present showed support for this project that truly benefits many facets of our community, not just the Little League. However, as we were not part of the agenda of record that night, a formal resolution could not be made. To this extent, we formally asked that the proposal be included on February's agenda, which is tonight's meeting, for which, Mr. Mayor, you replied, "Yes, absolutely." To our dismay, it was once again excluded, despite this commitment from being made. Attempts by myself and others to revisit this promise via the council meeting official recording had proven fruitless, as for some unknown reason, the January 16th council meeting and only this meeting were either unavailable or not properly viewing on the live stream website. This issue had been communicated to Milltown News' 15 Station Manager Ross Einbinder and Councilwoman Mayor for further review, and thankfully, as of Sunday afternoon, the new link to the recording is available via the borough's YouTube channel, and is at this time that we revisited this video footage, and we did see that your response was, "Yes, absolutely, we'd be on February's agenda." Following January's council meeting, under the guidance and request of the mayor, the formal light proposal for Muscat lighting was sent to our borough engineer, and the special council was held on Tuesday, February 6th. During the special council meeting on the 6th, the light proposal was discussed at length, for which all facets were covered. There were a few key takeaways from that meeting, for which we feel have been researched and answered. With regard to the PSENG settlement monies, it's come to our attention that borough administration has confirmed PSENG settlement monies can in fact be used towards this project, and in fact, it would cover the entire project, not just the portion of the grant covered. If the suggestion that there's no additional money remaining for the $460,000 settlement, then the citizens of Milltown deserve to know where that money is and how it is spent. To date, we're aware of $140,000 spent towards two electric utility vehicles, and aside from that, there should still be well over $300,000 in funds available, which is more than enough to fund this project, as well as the various other community park improvements. Item two pertaining to engineering costs. We have conferred with our borough engineer, CME associates, that any related engineering costs, which will be approximately $10,000 to $15,000, and should also be able to be covered through the PSENG settlement monies. Item number three pertain to other parks, the requests for repairs and improvements. The letter from Councilman Farkas to Middlesex County requesting the grant listed many other park repairs and requests, not just the lights on Field 2. Many of these items were in conjunction and similar to those items that Councilwoman Kerber and Mr. Ralph Chesenaski had on their wish list. Additionally, as previously outlined, there are ample funds remaining even after the lights project that can be directed towards these enhancement, repairs, and upgrades, which can also be funded up to 50% under the same Middlesex County grant. However, Little League and the children of our community should not be held hostage to this larger piece of the pie. Item number four with regard to the bond ordinance. This proposal for lights specifically would not require a bond ordinance, which means the mayor can be a tiebreaker as if necessary, and I would ask that he is. We have heard the mayor repeat countless times for council to see past your political lines and beyond your affiliations and do what was best for the community and for the children. I am asking our mayor to lead by example, and rather than push for this to become a bond ordinance, which seems unnecessary, as this could be a fully funded matter that has no cost to the borough, which would then thusly allow you to exercise your ability to break a tie during resolution if need be. I strongly believe we have answered all the questions and fulfilled the requests made by council and mayor. Understanding a decision may not be capable tonight, as once again, we're not on the agenda, I am seeking your support in either another special council meeting. Sorry if I'm messing up that meeting schedule, I lost you guys during that discussion, where this matter can be brought to resolution, so we need not waste additional time until the March meeting. If this is not doable, then I do hope we will not be pushed off of the March agenda, as this was the case in January and February. In closing, we have a 50% off coupon and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. In my heart, I firmly believe there's not a single person here tonight that doesn't believe that this is a great proposal, and it will bring to the community the positive impacts of the children we all collectively serve. As I shared in the beginning, we're all here today because we want to do what was best for the borough of Milltown, the residents, and especially our children. I simply ask for your courage to do what is right, and not allow your political affiliations or dislike of any one person or persons to influence your decision on this matter. This is all that the mayor has been suggesting that you do. I've spent more time in these chambers than I have on my baseball fields, and I've heard the mayor countless times ask the council to come together and come to an agreement. We can't agree over a meeting schedule, hopefully we can agree over lights. This is a job that the mayor has been suggesting all along, and the job we should truly be doing, and it was the oath that was taken when asked to serve the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments, and I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So be it. Second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilman Legati, that we adjourn. Will the administrator please call roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
We have six ayes, Mr. Mayor.
So moved, we are in adjournment. We'll be taken out on about a 10-minute adjournment, we'll be back for the regular meeting.